Did you leave us the pledge?
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you do this prayer, please?
Yes. Father God in heaven, we come before you on the seventh day of November, and we thank you for your loving kindness, we thank you for your mercy, we thank you for everything that you're doing behind the scenes. God, we ask that you will have your perfect will here in the city of Montavista, not just here in the city of Montavista, but also across the entire valley. God, we thank you for your guidance, we ask for mercy, Lord, in the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Will you do local, please?
Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Counselor Segola?
Here.
Counselor Ellathart?
Here.
Counselor, or Mayor Becker?
Here.
Coram is declared.
Application to agenda, none?
None.
Approval of consent agenda, minutes for regular meeting, October 17, 2019, review and approval of accounts payable. Would you approve the consent agenda?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is there any more discussion? Anita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathart?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Wearing in of new officers? The chief? This is your department, sir.
It's always a good day. Well, it's always a good day, we get to add a couple new faces to the crew. And tonight's a little bit unique, because we have an officer and a code enforcement officer tonight. Both local guys, and we're pretty happy to have them. Chris, he's actually a Montavista resident, and he's gonna be patrol officer for us, and hopefully we're lucky enough to get him, recently graduated from academy last year.
Yep.
Do a little time with the sheriff's office, so we can get a position form open, and he can come and join us. Glad to have him. You wanna tell us anything about yourself, or introduce anybody that might be here?
I'm Jordan Rais, here, graduated in the center, just got out of the academy. I worked in the jail for eight months while I was in the academy, then I was on the road to the sheriff's office for about four and a half months, then I transferred over here to Montevideo. And I have a two-year-old.
He's stuck with Purple Hearts, I feel nervous. Who'd you like to pin your badge tonight?
Center.
And Eric, so he's an Alamosa resident, but he's giving us his best shot trying to clean up the town. I think he's a little bit overwhelmed so far, but he's figuring it out, doing a good job. Happy to have him, he's got some security background, which is gonna help. When you're out there trying to be safe cleaning out Montavista, it's a full-time job, for sure. Anything you wanna say, or anybody you wanna introduce?
I'll have my family back here, and I'm glad that I'm here in town. Regina from Chicago, lived now in Alamosa a couple of years already. Glad working for the city of Montavista. I came from RGSO too, from the jail, and I'm glad I'm here.
I didn't hear your accent, you said Chicago, baby.
Chris's always in Chicago.
Who would you like to pin you to?
Me. What?
Come on up, man. I still think we do one of the most honorable jobs out there. It's a tricky job, we don't always get it right, but these guys both have the heart required to do the best job we possibly can. All right, you ready for this long-winded thing?
Yes, sir.
All right. So, they'll be two different, so just be careful with the position. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
Hi, Chris.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Under the penalty of perjury?
Under the penalty of perjury.
That on my honor?
On my honor.
I will never betray?
I will never betray.
My integrity?
My integrity.
My character?
My character.
Or the public trust?
Or the public trust.
I will always have the courage?
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself?
To hold myself.
And others accountable?
And others accountable.
For our actions?
For our actions.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards?
Always maintain the highest ethical standards.
And uphold the values?
And uphold the values.
Of my community?
Of my community.
And the agency I serve?
And the agency I serve.
I will support the Constitution?
I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States of America?
The laws of the United States of America.
The state of Colorado?
The state of Colorado.
The city of Montavista charter?
The city of Montavista charter.
Ordinances?
Ordinances.
Code of ethics?
Code of ethics.
Mission statement?
Mission statement.
And the laws of the county agreement?
And the laws of the county agreement.
I swear to carry out all my duties?
Swear to carry out all my duties.
Acting in accordance with the above?
Acting in accordance with the above.
Reference guidelines?
Reference guidelines.
And I will faithfully perform the duties?
I will faithfully perform the duties.
A police officer?
Police officer.
Code enforcement officer?
Code enforcement officer.
To whom I have been appointed?
To whom I have been appointed.
And upon which I am about to enter?
To which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thanks, everybody.
Thanks, guys, thanks everybody for being here. Okay. Scheduled appearances. In order to be included in this portion of the agenda, you have to file the appropriate paperwork with the city clerk for later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. First one is Community Resources and Housing Development Board.
Hello there.
How are you?
My name is Ramona Archuleta, and I'm the family, or the coordinator, field coordinator for Community Resources and Housing Development. And Janet is our director, she has been doing this for many, many years, and has built houses all over the San Luis Valley. So, we're in the process, the reason we wanted to meet with you today is we wanted to just let you know that we do have a subdivision here in Montavista. It's Terra?
Terra del Sol.
Terra del Sol subdivision, and we have lots there, and we wanna start building again. So basically, our grants, we're in two-year grant cycles, and we would like to start. So right now, we're trying to take applications from folks that are interested in trying to do a self-help home. And we wanna start building here in Montavista again, and start really getting people into decent housing. We do have our subdivision in Alamosa, and we also have a subdivision in San Luis. So we're still working in those areas as well, but we're really focusing on Montavista. So, police department, whoever is working, so we're really looking at county folks, you know, that need to get into housing in this area, so. Or anybody, I mean, rural. But the reason, you know, if you're reaching out to some of your county employees who need housing, or city employees, you know, that's, we're taking applications and would like to be talking to people. Our office is located in Alamosa, but you can come in, make an appointment, and, yeah, we'd be, like to talk to folks. I left you a couple of brochures. Basically, we do have this one, so it's, you know, it's being able to construct your own home, you earn sweat equity. You get a choice of house plans, we do three and four-bedroom houses. There is no down payment. And you have the affordable monthly mortgage payments. There's flexible qualifying guidelines, low-interest rate loans, I think they're running, what, 3% right now?
Yeah.
And the families that we work with, we work in groups of usually five or six. So families are working together and building these houses. They're building a group of houses at a time. So by the time we finish six houses, everybody's able to move in at the same time. But they all work together, so it's not just a matter of you building your own home. You are building your own home, but you're also getting that assistance from everybody else. And it's just good for the community, you know, it just helps, it helps your communities. Something else you'd like to add? I don't know, it is?
Of course, there's some of you here that do know where our subdivision is. It's right off Sixth. And we've got, I think we have like seventeen lots?
I think twelve here.
Twelve, twelve there, seventeen somewhere, that we'd like to get families in there. I think the last time we built here, self-help anyway, it's been probably good since almost ten years. So we'd like to, you know, come back. By coming back is just asking everyone to let other folks know, 'cause you may not need a home, but you might know someone that would like to be in the program. Right now, I believe there's two here from Montavista that are interested in building. I mean, we did other building here, we did a stick build right there behind, what is that? Big R. We did that one right there, that was a stick build that we did. Plus then we did modulators, and we did lease-to-own, all in that subdivision. But we'd like to, you know, come back, do some self-helps, you know, if it's five homes, it's five homes that other people who are now currently renting, 'cause rent right now is so expensive, that if they probably qualified and lived in a self-help home, they'd probably be paying less mortgage than what they're paying rent now, because, and then, you know, it's a fixed rate, and it is at 3% now. You know, it goes up, it could change every month, but that's still really low. And it's a fixed rate, so if their income goes up, it's gonna stay. Their house payment will remain the same. So we just wanted to come back out here and let all you folks know that we really, really wanna come back and get some more housing going here. Any questions?
Any ideas?
No, you've, how many homes in Terra del Sol have been built this way? Or was this new? Have you built some there?
Yes. We have.
I think we did nineteen self-help, and I think we did about fourteen leased-to-own. And then we did ten modulators, all in that one subdivision. And then we did two stick builds, which is totally different. We're the general contractor for those. So like I said, we did the one here, and then we did one on Monroe, a two-story home there on Monroe.
So and then we do have more land there, too, that we can develop, right, or not?
We still have a lot of land there that we can develop there in Terra del Sol. It's huge.
I know several families have built them, the ones I know are in Alamosa. But you know, they're such, they're great homes, and you get to pick the things you like. You can do them big enough to suit you and your family, they're very affordable, and they hold their resale value.
Yes.
Several of them used it, used those homes as starter homes, and then as their income increased, they could sell that one and?
Yeah.
Got their money back out, and had something to start to a new home with. And it's just an important service, I think you guys are wonderful.
Thanks.
Yeah. The homes are great.
The homes are very, very nice, and, you know, and I think it helps families start building wealth. You know, if they can get into their own homes, it really helps them. And when we're working with low and very low-income people, that's something that they need to start building their financial wealth with. And we start talking about that, because the other thing that we offer is we do the counseling, credit counseling. So if somebody has a credit issue, then we can get them on a plan to realize the dream of getting a house. It may not be in this grant, but, you know, let's get you ready for the next grant. So we wanna really work with folks in getting them into their houses. So, and that's what we do, and that's what we like to do, so.
Yeah, I think it creates a wonderful sense of community if you're building a home along with four or five other families.
Yes.
You know, you have immediate friends and neighbors and people you trust and people you know, and it's a wonderful sense of community. The people I know who've done it, I've not heard one bad thing about any of it, the process at all.
Yeah, great.
So it's great.
Yeah, we, now that the homes we're doing now, we're doing laminate flooring. We do carpet, but just in the bedrooms. So we try to improve, we have Energy Star features. We did do some Energy Star certified. Just to get them certified, it's like an additional $1,600, and we're not required to do that, but we're still continuing with the features, which we do the, we blow foam insulation into all the exterior walls, penetrations, and that gives them an R23 value instead of an R19, when, you know, we put the bats up. That's an Energy Star feature. They have now Renai tankless water heaters, which is another Energy Star feature. We try to make sure homeowners get Energy Star appliances, all of that. And when we do Energy Star, we are required to do conditioned air crawl spaces. So, they're like a tomb, and they have a fan that circulates all that air. And the minute there's any moisture, it'll kick on. Once it's, there's no moisture, it kicks off, and they're very?
They're very well-built homes.
They're very well-built, they seem to be getting better every year. I have past homeowners that say, "Oh, you guys are doing this now, and you didn't do it when we were there." But, you know, the key is to keep, you know, improving and getting better. So that's why I say we have, we kept the features, but we don't get the certification. But there are still some self-help homes that we have to certify, because if there's a family that qualifies, let's say, for $170,000, but that's not enough to do a self-help, they're just running a little bit short, they can use, I think it's a 2% ratio, if we do it an Energy Star certified home, the loan amount goes up. So therefore, we can help them. So like in the next group, we're gonna have two or three of those that we're gonna certify, but everybody still gets the features. So that's an important thing. Any other questions?
I think it's fantastic what you're doing, and I'm glad you're coming back tomorrow.
Good.
Thank you, appreciate it. Hopefully, like I said, we got two, if we can get two more, three more. I mean, we've done groups up to seven, eight. So the more, the better, but if we can, you know, come back with four, five, that would be awesome, and we're just asking for support and let people know.
Perfect.
Yes. Thank you so much for your time.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
2020 census and ways to engage the city of Montavista?
Hello, my name is Luis Alvarez, I am partnership specialist for the San Luis Valley for the 2020 census. Basically, my job entails coming to city council meetings, engaging with nonprofits, engaging with whomever is available to listen to my talk, and partnering with them to get them to promote the census for us. So basically, I talk a little bit about the census, why we have it, and why it exists. It's Article One, Section Two of the U.S. Constitution. I'm trying to figure out where exactly to stand to not block anybody's view. I might just hide behind the podium? Maybe I'll stand back here?
There you go.
Yeah. So Article One, Section Two of the Constitution, our founding fathers decided that we needed to count everybody that was in the United States. Started in 1790, we did our first census, and we've had twenty-four decennial censuses since then. We do census operations in between those decennial years. That's where we get data, like unemployment data and stuff like that, out of the census. So the census exists between those years, but this is our big push, and this is where we count everybody. One of the reasons we count people is for funding. So, this is a study done by George Washington University, and I can hand these out. And it talks about, a little bit about how the funding is divided out throughout the United States and in Colorado. Thirteen billion dollars were dispersed in, this shelf is a little shallow, so it's making my papers fall off. Thirteen billion dollars in 2016 were dispersed based on census funding. It's important to the Valley, because a lot of this funding comes through Medicaid, SNAP, such as A housing, WIC, for foster care, low-income energy assistance. All these federal funds are based on population data. So we really try to get this, these numbers out. So communities, it's really important for communities specifically like the Valley to get a complete count, or to get as accurate as a count as possible. We also do it for proportionment. So, House of Representatives is capped at 435. Colorado has seven reps in Washington. We can gain or lose depending on population of representatives. That means other states gain or lose depending on how it's divided. So it basically gets traded around. Also, city, county commissioner, districts also get divided like that, and also the state gets divided up like that for the House, so four districting. So to me, this one's important. Living in a rural area, I'm always hearing, "We're not represented, you know, in Denver or in DC, this is a way to get more reps," and to represent the rural communities. So, okay. Some of the issues that we have with the census and getting it out is confidentiality. People are really concerned about confidentiality with the census. Specifically this year, there's been a lot of, a lot of press about the census, and so we wanna really push that this information is confidential. We release that only as trap data, not individual data. If I break that rule and I release individual data, I can get five years in prison, $250,000 fine. That's my house, and missing most of my kids' developmental years. So I don't wanna do that, so I'm gonna keep it to myself. I also took the employee of, I had to raise my right hand and say, you know, I'm not, I protect this data for life. The census does release the individual data after seventy-two years. And that's how we get information from ancestry. So right now, we can look up census data for 1940 was the last release. So you can look up 1940 census data and see where grandparents, parents, family members lived and what streets, and so that is all available right now. So, this is why I kind of exist in the Valley. It's the first time that a partnership specialist has been designated to the San Luis Valley. The last 2010 census, there was something like 350 partnership specialists in the whole nation. Now we're 1,500. So they realized that we're kind of important, engaging our communities. We're from the communities, we live in the communities, so we know where to go to find these hard-to-count populations that we call. So if we look at this, the darker the color, that's the harder to count population. The Valley, for the most part, is in this 20 to 30% of people that kind of are figuring that'll just get that survey and throw it away, and not answer, and not answer the door, and not trust people. So that's why I'm here, to try to encourage trusted voices in the community, to encourage those hard-to-count populations to engage in the census, and to engage in their civic duty of completing the census. I have some specifics to Montavista. Montavista is a census trap all on its own. Its low response score is 24.2%. This is from our response outreach mapper, and this can, this is available to everybody online. It's free. We have some other data here, based on the American Community Survey of 2017. You can find out how many households live, persons below the poverty level, for example, 18% in Montavista, stuff like that, information that's pretty valuable for planning and for getting ideas of who lives in this community. So 24% of the residents in Montavista will not want to answer that census. Just to give you an idea also, how the census will work in Montavista, this is what we call our type of enumeration area. So the blue area are places where just, they'll just get mail, and people will be expected to respond, and then, and that'll be it. The yellow area is places where there'll actually be somebody coming to the door and hand-delivering the survey from the beginning. So if you look, 95% of the country is blue, meaning that we'll just, hopefully, they'll respond initially by filling out the survey. If we look at Rio Grande County, we have a lot more yellow than the rest of the country. Of course, that's a lot of national forests and stuff like that, but a lot of those houses there will get that. So Montavista, right there, will be a part of, everybody will get a mail-out initially. There'll be, anywhere I've heard, from six to seven mail-outs. That'll go out before an enumerator actually goes to the door. So if you don't answer, someone will come to the door. So, what I try to do is get partnerships with city councils, with community members, chambers, business owners, faith-based community, whoever will talk to me, whoever will wanna promote the census for us. And so that's kind of where we go. Because me, as a federal employee, they're not likely, not gonna trust me. "Hey, fill out the census, I'm really A-OK," you know? So I try to get trusted voices to really buy into the census, give them the information that they need, talk about the confidentiality, answer those questions. So, partnership looks like putting up window space for posters. I don't know, there've been people coming into the Valley with, for recruitment, try to recruit people, so there are census posters around. I don't know if anybody has seen them, but we're trying to really try to get it out there. We host events, we try to, we try to get people to host events, we try to have places issue public endorsements. Places like the city of Montavista, and it's a possibility or a suggestion, things like putting in a mail-out in the water bill, in the garbage bill. "Hey, this is important, this is coming, fill this out, it's important for our community," and kind of explain that. And so I can provide access to the information to put in those mail-outs as well. We also have what we call a complete count committee. And this is hosted through the Development Resource Group in Alamosa. And we have people from all over the Valley represented there. It's available to anybody that wants to join. If we have city membership, it would be great. But we have Jean Glover, county commissioner, is on that board, running that committee. So we decide ways to outreach specifically to the Valley. This is one of the things I really like about this, this job. I've been here thirteen years in the Valley, working nonprofits, always getting instructions from Denver, and people saying, "Oh, you need to do this," and it's like, well, this is not gonna work in the Valley. I'll do it, because it's my job, and you're telling me to do it, and it's what I need to do to fulfill my grant, or whatever it is. But in the Valley is a little bit different. And so this is kind of nice, to be able to do this, to empower people in the Valley to come up with their own way to market to the Valley, because we know what'll reach people in the Valley. And we also have, we also, so we're on social media on the Facebook page, San Luis Valley Census 2020. So liking that, sharing that widely throughout is also a way of marketing, making sure that people are seeing this, and so there's some brand awareness as well. So, we're starting also to see census scams, so I've had to keep this into my talks. But the census is not gonna, is not gonna send out unsolicited emails to request participation. It's not gonna ask for social security numbers, bank accounts, money or donations. And so, and we won't contact you on behalf of a political party. We're completely apolitical, we stay away from politics, because we try to build trust in our communities. So, yeah. There'll be four ways to respond, it's the first census ever to be able to It's the first census ever to be able to respond by internet. So it'll be available on a phone, it'll be available on computers. One of the things, we did get a grant, the Complete Count Committee that we have, got a grant to buy some computers so that those will be available to anywhere in the community so people can go and set up stations for people to fill out the census. There's also concerns about PO boxes because the census will not mail to PO boxes. It will only do it to places that are associated with the residents. And so the feeling is that a lot of residents in the Valley will get missed if those mail-outs won't reach them. So the Complete Count Committee is going to be putting in mail-outs in every PO box in the Valley as part of what they're doing with that grant. So then you'll be able to answer by phone, you'll be able to answer by paper. And if you really are avoiding all of that and you want to have a federal worker come to your door, there'll be somebody in person coming to your door. And that'll happen sometime in May or late April. So another way of passive marketing, we try to get people to work for us. Because if you apply for the census, you're more likely to respond to the census. So we're looking for a hundred and twelve applicants in Rio Grande County alone. Out of that, they'll probably hire a quarter of those, is what the math works out. But they want to make sure that we get about a hundred and twelve. Right now, there are fifty applicants in Rio Grande County. So anybody that wants to work for the census, it just went up today. The numbers went up for 2020, sixteen dollars an hour, fifty-eight cents a model. And there's a lot of drive up that can happen in these rural communities. So you could probably make up a lot of that salary for that hour of wage, just in my reach. So, and that's my presentation. If there are any questions.
I don't really have a question, but I want you to clarify again one more time so people that are watching this at home understand the importance of account to provide back to the one door you had like WIC and everything that it helps through. Like right there.
Yep.
Knowing that we are in a lower-income area, how crucial this is for them based on low-income energy assistance, WIC, all those programs, how important that is to them. So if they're watching, that's what they need to understand, that it's going to benefit them just to spend a few minutes working there.
Right. And it's going to be ten questions. 2010 census apparently had a long form that was forty or something like that. People got locked down with it. It's ten questions, and it really does help our communities with this. A lot of people in the Valley depend on this. Working for the Mental Health Center, as I did, and working for other nonprofits here in the Valley, I saw a lot of people that came in that needed and depended on these funding sources. And so if we get this money, if we get the correct count and a good count, we get more money for our community. I was talking to, in Social Services down in Costilla County, they've had a huge influx of people since 2016. And the director there is basically paying for two with the money of one. So we don't want to get into that situation at all.
Where would somebody go in the Valley or around here locally if they wanted to participate in the census too, as far as being a census taker?
As far as being a census taker, the applications are online. Now, if somebody doesn't have access to a computer, they can do it on a phone as well, I believe. But the workforce centers also have all that information. And we've been working with the workforce center here in Mony and the workforce center in Alamosa to assist with that stuff and getting those questions answered. They also have direct line to our recruitment people as well. So if there are any questions I can. So I can leave some cards at the front as well to try to get people to apply. So it's in its 2020census.gov/jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll go here and be sure to reveal about sharing that.
And that would be counting.
Let folks know that it's very important to hire.
Thank you, and go on to this.
You said it's very cool.
Flashcam.
I think it was USA, jobs.
Oh, I don't understand.
You can, you can. There's a lot of statistics.
Yeah. Yeah.
Same with grandparents.
Sure, I'll be very careful.
This is for the seventeen.
Sixteen, maybe sixteen more. Good to use it online.
Okay, we have Rio Grande County Public Health, Rio Grande Provincial Partners Youth Group, nicotine products.
All right. Well.
Can you help us sign that?
There. We definitely will do that. So I guess I'll start out and just thank you guys for hearing us, Mr. Mayor and city councilors and all. My name's Paul Wertz, Public Health Nurse for the county here. And I'm joined here by Rio Grande County Provincial Partners Youth Group. Max Garcia, Andreas Villa, and Chloe Heinz, representing both Montevista and Delmar, actually. We've combined the cities together here. So basically, why we're here today is to hopefully make you aware of what I would consider a huge problem within our community and our state, and the nation, really, actually. I mean, a problem that's huge enough in my perspective as a public health nurse, if this was measles or tuberculosis or even just the flu, we would consider this an epidemic outbreak, basically. What we're talking about is vaping, vape nicotine delivery devices among our youth, basically. So kind of to start out with, I hope you guys got some of the handouts I may have put out to you guys. I'd kind of like you to take a look here at what we call our Healthy Kids Colorado Survey. This survey is done by the youth all around Colorado every other year. So this was done in 2017. There's one currently going on right now in the school system. They're out taking this survey. We hope to have some more data this early to late summer. But if you would kind of take a look down, about halfway down the page, you can see there these youths have responded if they have ever used a vapor product. Several different categories. The first category there is schools, and that is schools nationwide. And about forty-seven percent of our youth have ever tried a vapor device, which is fairly alarming. If you'll go to the next section on that, it says HSR eight. That is our region. That is the San Luis Valley we are speaking about there. And if you take note there, it says forty-nine point two percent of our youth have used a vapor device. Even more alarming, I mean, we can go down the line there. The state average is just slightly below the Valley average of forty-four percent of our youth have used. And then this last line, the YBS, is a federal study that's just used for comparison. Helps us figure if our data is good, if all the numbers kind of correspond. It makes our data seem more appropriate. And with, according to the federal national surveys out there, about forty-two percent are. So these seem to be very, very good numbers from a public health perspective. What's even more alarming, though, is the line just beneath it here, whereas, "Have you ever used, have you used a vape device in the last thirty days?" And that's fairly representative of, are you currently using this product? And schools across the nation, about seventeen percent. Our region here, at least twenty percent. The state is nearly thirty percent. Basically, I'd like to kind of let these guys talk to you a little bit. They're the ones living and breathing this experience and seeing it. And I'm going to let them tell you what they're seeing in our community.
So like Paul said, I think that the Healthy Kid data is a good baseline to get, especially at first. But since it's a self-reporting survey, not all the kids are going to answer honestly. So I think those numbers are definitely up, higher than what they show. Just knowing that anyone over eighteen can go and buy tobacco products. They can go out and buy these for the younger kids. So what I see is that especially upperclassmen, usually seniors, they're able to go out for this. And that just passes down towards the younger classes. So I think that raising this age to buy tobacco would be really useful because that'd cut off access to high school and it'd just be good overall. Because not everyone sees, especially, I think, the adults, they don't necessarily see how bad this is. But in the locker rooms, in the bathrooms, kids are doing this, and it's really prevalent everywhere. So I think it's a really big issue. So I would like to voice that five years ago, ten years ago, nobody heard about people dying from the use of vapor products. And now, due to its current spike, we see that many, many people have died. There's, I think the last time I saw it, there was twenty-five people died because of a direct correlation between use of vapor and their death. And so I'd like to express that us as a youth, we are the ones that are going to create changes for our future. Like ultimately, it relies on adults and all of you guys, the facilitators. But we're creating our own future. And when we are your age, those changes that we made are going to be the most important for the youth after us. And so I think that there should be absolutely no reason why we need to understand the long-term effects of vaping, especially in the youth. And so if we did raise the age for, you know, buying vapor products, then that would be a huge impact to what the youth are available to and the effects that it has on the youth. And personally, I think that I see it way too much. In school, out of school, it's definitely marketed towards what I think is the youth. You know, you have these flavors, bubble gum, mango, all these different delicious flavors that market to the youth. Because I don't think that adults specifically look for those type of flavors and want that, you know? Adults, from my perspective, and for what I think vapor products are for, is to wane somebody off of cigarettes. And so they don't look for those types of things, but the youth does. And so not only that, but also that its stigma is that it's not as bad as cigarettes, which is completely incorrect. And so, like Max said, seniors, I would say at least half, fifty percent of the senior class is eighteen or over. And that's fifty percent of people that are able to buy vapor products for themselves and for people that are younger than them. And that's something that should be prevented and should be definitely stopped. And because there's definitely going to be less adults that are buying vapor products for the youth. And ultimately, it's the youth that does this for the youth. And it's detrimental. And for us to succeed and create a blossoming community and to really create a society in where things matter, we have to understand that we need to not ruin our future.
All right, so I know I can say, and I'm pretty sure almost all the youth in here can say that they know somebody that is not just using vapes, but are addicted to vapes. And that, to me, is really important because being addicted is, they could be wanting to get out, but they can't. And then all the recent deaths that are coming up and all the health problems that are coming up, it's scary for all the youth because it's hard to know that somebody you love or for them, they, like, they can't get out of it. So if it were harder for them to get it, or if we could just do any type of restriction, if we could just give them any little push to get out of that addiction, I know it would make a huge change and help a lot of kids not do it. Because a lot of people started because they thought it was cool. And they thought, "Oh, I'm just going to do this to fit in with, like, the popular kids." And now they're stuck in this addiction and they can't get out. And I think any little push they can get to get out of that addiction would just be great.
So I like what these two said. I think that vape products are definitely targeted towards youth. And I don't think the youth necessarily know what they're getting themselves into. If you were to ask youth what they are vaping, they would just say water vapor or flavoring. They don't necessarily know that there's nicotine or other chemicals within this vape. So it's really interesting to see that these youths are doing something they don't quite understand, that we all don't quite understand. And if you take a look at when they raised age for alcohol, that really cut down youth drinking. So I believe that same effect would follow if Montevista was able to push this through.
Right. I think Montevista can be a firestarter for this cause. I think that if we were the first ones to implement this, maybe we're not the first ones, but at least in the San Luis Valley. Because if we raise the age of Montevista, people are just going to go drive fifteen minutes to Alamosa and buy it there. So I think we need to be the leaders in this and help this spread to the whole Valley, you know, hopefully, to the whole state and onwards.
Let's take initiative.
And this will only affect our generation, but will prevent younger generations from getting addicted too.
So we would like you to maybe turn to another handout I gave you. We did provide you with some options that many counties around Colorado have utilized and have been found to be effective for preventing, you know, helping to prevent youth vaping. The number one really is licensing and regulation. Vape products are not regulated by the FDA. They're not regulated by the state, they're not regulated by the feds. We don't for sure know what is in these products even. So our biggest emphasis to you as our leaders and lawmakers would be to consider a licensure and a regulation of that. In that licensing regulations, we would ask that you consider something like, these youths have mentioned, Tobacco Twenty-One. I am part of that generation who was able to go buy beer at eighteen years old. We were drinking beer in the parking lot at eighteen years old of this high school. I have a lot to do with the schools nowadays. That is not something that is occurring anymore. And I believe that to be, that we changed the age that people were allowed to buy alcohol. And I think that we could make a strong move towards helping our youth by doing something like Tobacco Twenty-One, making it a twenty-one years old. There are some other strategies I've provided to you as well. Other counties have chosen to go ahead and ban flavors. A little more complicated, a little more in-depth into an ordinance there. And other counties have worked on price increase as well. We want to make sure you have these tools to you. I also put in, if you guys are considering regulating, a kind of nice little tool here, essential components for an effective licensing program. This has been utilized and built up through what all of the different Colorado counties that adopted these policies. And we've really taken them up with solid and good out of that and created a document to help guide other counties to make their own ordinances. I was also requested that you guys would know what other municipalities and stuff were doing these types of initiatives. I believe you guys should have that document as well. There are communities such as Aspen, Avon, Basalt, Boulder, Breckenridge, Carbondale, Denver, Dillon, Eagle County, Edgewater, Fountain, Frisco, Glenwood Springs, Golden, Mahunta, Lakewood, Manitou Springs, Midturn, Pueblo, Rocky Ford, Silverthorn, Snowmass Village, and Steamboat Springs. All have chosen to regulate tobacco in their communities.
Did they have a Twenty-One, or are they a Tobacco Twenty-One?
There are not all of them. I can tell you which ones have Tobacco Twenty-One. So Aspen.
Doesn't really matter, I was just curious.
To me, the better portion, more than three-quarters of those ones mentioned, have gone with Tobacco Twenty-One. And the rate. As, as, and the regulation, Tobacco Twenty-One, it does nothing without some type of, you know, licensing and regulation. I would encourage it, we've gone to license and regulate, we must do things such as compliance checks with, with local businesses to, to ensure compliance and things like that. So licensing, I would expect a fee would need to be incurred for licensing to, to facilitate compliance checks and things like that.
Well, first of all, I want to tell you guys how much I admire you for raising the bar for everybody in Montevista, not just the high school kids, not just everybody in the school system, but raising the bar for us as a community. We need to do that. And I know it takes courage to speak out on things like that sometimes within your, your community and, and, you know, the kids you hang out with. And I also know, I've been in the school system, and a lot of those kids are upset. A lot of, it's not just a small group of kids. There are a lot of kids who would like to see the age raised at least to twenty-one and stricter regulations within our community. And you're right, it has to be a valley-wide thing. So I hope you go to the other councils.
My counterpart in Alamosa is about two weeks behind me, going to work with their city council members as well. When we leave, we are going to present to town council of Del Marque as well. We hope to go to the county and to South Fork as well with our youth group here. Alamosa has a, has a group that...
Center as well.
We are taking initiative all around the valley. We're hoping to get at least one to, you know, if we can play off each other, if we can say, "Montevista is willing to do this," Alamosa is even more likely and vice versa. So we want this to truly be a valley, valley thing. People do throw things at us like, well, they could get it on the internet. It is completely possible. However, the more counties and municipalities that will do something like this, the more likely state will go ahead and make something in the end, which then could end that loophole of buying things off of the internet as well.
And I think as much as anything, it's about creating awareness. And I think if we as a community take a stand and create the awareness that, you know, this isn't something we want to do necessarily. I think it's important. What, what do we currently have? I know we have a vape shop, I saw a big sign, a big flag thing down there. What, do we have rules and regs for that at all?
There are, and most of it comes out of convenience store fashion.
Right. And how, how do we, is that, that would be a mic to hear, would that be a, who would I ask that question to? How involved is it to make something like that happen in our community?
Well, it would definitely be some involvement, some regulation, but a lot of communities are already, are already doing it, so.
To your public council?
Being the council director myself and staff do something.
And we've been talking, Paul, and we've discussed this for a while, I've actually sent some information around to the council and to chief and talked to city manager about it. I am absolutely in favor of the twenty-one age, absolutely in favor of licensing. Very simply, and I hadn't talked to chief about this to make sure we weren't creating more effort that, that wasn't generating a result. And he's, in, at least in our conversation, let me get some of your input on that. But the one thing that I want to do is instruct the staff to, to work on some kind of an ordinance that we can discuss. So we'll go into that in, in more detail, but I appreciate your input. We just had a chance to spend some time with all of you guys that are taking a stand that probably shouldn't admit it, but that we've taken in, in high school. But doing the right thing, and that's important, so I appreciate your presentation. But yeah, we, I would like to open that discussion with the council to some degree, at least looking into, your numbers were pretty accurate. Pretty much every city that you mentioned has gone the full route with controlling and raising the age. Twenty of the twenty-three that we know about are, have raised the tobacco age to twenty-one.
I believe there's about eight or ten more I don't have on the list since yesterday's ballot initiatives. So I think there is even more that I'm not aware of. There is some, some, if we are talking drafting ordinance and stuff, I believe there is attorneys at a state level that are more than willing to help county and city municipalities draft ordinances and stuff as well. But I could definitely put, put in touch with your attorney or whatever if there was a need.
So do we need a motion? What, what is your one?
I don't think so. I'm correct.
Y'all wanted to direct us toward that, I had not.
And looking into it from the standpoint of both licensing and enajment. So if that's, if you're in agreement.
Yeah, I would definitely support the twenty-one.
So I just, I also just want to, you know, give you guys kudos, man, for stepping up and doing something. When I was growing up, I was on the opposite end of that. You know, I was encouraging kids to do wrong and giving them drugs and showing them how to use them and doing all the bad stuff. I have my own kids now and my life has changed tremendously. But, you know, just to share with you guys in the community, I have a fourteen-year-old that just recently got caught with the vape. And I'm like, you know, all over him. And before I caught him with the, or somebody caught him with the vape and let me know, about a month or two ago, I walk outside in my, in the morning and I'm like, you know, I'm walking through my yard and I walk back to my front yard and I go, "What is that?" You know, so I walk over to it and like, and it's hidden, okay, it's hidden in my yard. And I'm like, "What is that?" You know, so I go over there and I pick it up and I go, "What is this? What is that?" And I push it and it turns on, I'm like, "What is this thing?" I realize, oh, this must be a vape. And my twelve-year-old is the one who brought it home. So, you know, just like what you guys are saying, you know, it's, it's available to everybody, you know? It's, it's not just because they're eighteen, it's, look, I have my twelve-year-old that was, you know, and I talked to him, he's like, "It's the first time I brought it, I just brought it home." He got in trouble and I let, I told him, "Where did you get it?" He goes, "I got it from my, my friend's house, it was his mom and his dad's." So here I go, "Hey, did you know that your son gave my son a vape?" You know? And it's like, "What?" You know, and, and so I, I appreciate that, you know, because there has to be a standard against everything that's being allowed, you know? Because just because everybody's doing it doesn't, you know, you guys have heard it, doesn't make it right.
Right.
You know? And, and so I appreciate that, you know, you guys are taking a stand and stepping up because our kids, my kids, don't just look to me, they look to their older friends as role models, you know? So if they can have better role models, man, I'm all for it. You know, and I support you guys, man, I think it's great.
Thank you.
And I'm all for that.
And I think, like our policy, I definitely do think it's an epidemic.
Keep talking, keep getting there, keep talking, that's what you have to do.
I definitely think that even if it's not classified as an epidemic, it definitely has become one. You're, like you said, your twelve-year-old, that's, that, in my mind, that's ridiculous, you know?
It's middle school.
Yeah, and so that's, that's scary because, you know, you think about all these people that died and have had serious health issues and you wouldn't want that on anybody. And, but it's happening and people don't understand the, the consequences of doing something like that, of vaping.
And, and for me, you know, because I'm not sure how many of you guys have teenagers right now, but that hits home. You know what I mean? Like, it's happened at my house, you know, and I'm like, what do I have to do to, to cut this off? You know? And I'm doing every effort that I can, but you know what? They go to school. You know, they go to school and they have a hundred friends over there that, that don't have the same mentality or their parents don't have the same mentality as me. And they're like giving their kids stuff. You know, I've heard parents say, "Oh, I'd rather have them smoke in my, in my house or drink in my house than to be out there." And I'm like...
What's the difference?
Well, yeah, I, I think it's great, you know, and whatever I can do to help.
Thank you, thank you so much.
I got to thank you guys. We sat here and we've all come out of our comfort zone and, and of course, we're little people, like you said.
Maybe not what I was saying, but...
But we sit here and we talk like the youth that comes here from the high school. I guess they have to, but it's stepping out of your comfort zone, believing in something that will go forth and that, it's awesome to me. Great job, y'all did a great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you guys for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thanks for what you're doing here.
Well, moving on to resolutions. Oh, I'm sorry, I guess I better let citizens talk. Citizen comments. City council welcomes our unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes, council will not take action if the same we, are we citizens and would like to speak? Will you step up there and sign your name on that paper up there, please, in the studio room?
Good evening, I'm Lisa Clark. I'm partnering with the Montevista Police Department. I'm honored to announce a special fundraiser that I'm kicking off. It's in support of the Montevista Police Department and the Scott Carter Foundation. It's for pediatric cancer. With your help of purchasing one box of greeting cards, you are supporting research to help pediatric, pediatric cancer as well as our local police department by providing, I'm sorry, I'm really nervous, I'm bad at this. So you'll be helping provide the police department with a cute little plush teddy bear and a cuddle bear book. The police department will be handing said things out to the children that have been involved in domestic violence situations, victims of bullying, parents that have been incarcerated, et cetera, et cetera. So it's just a simple thirty dollars for a box of thirty greeting cards with like a dollar a card. It's the season for cards, so if you'd like, just find me after the meeting or I've got a couple of things going on, on the social media, so, or that guy right back there. But thank you for your time and that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good cause.
It is. The Scott Carter Foundation is an incredible foundation and most of the proceeds will be going to them, so.
Any other citizen comments? Are you sure to sign your name?
The only thing, I wasn't going to say anything except when the youth got up here and talked about the vaping. And as adults, a lot of those things that are going on in this country right now is because we didn't act. And I have talked to my congregation and I've talked to a lot of people I've seen. When you see a youth, talk to them, say, "How's your day?", but take time to listen. We had three young people come up here and talk about a lot of things that are going on. The problem of today, we didn't listen on the day when we were younger. Now we made a mess. Now let's listen to the youth as they try to clean up our mess.
Anybody else? Now we'll go to resolutions. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to present to council Resolution 2019-10, Amending the Snow Removal Policy for the City of Montevista. As pretty much everybody knows, snow removal is not an exact science and every community kind of dictates what is best for them. You've heard pros and cons of different ways of plowing. Tonight, Resolution 10, or 2019-10 is a representation of what I feel is the safest for our community and also taking what the comments from our community and trying to provide them the very best service that we can do. In summary, this is to take everything other than our downtown, from the center of the road to the curbs, actually get onto the streets at three inches instead of six, so we'll be out there sooner. No fees assessed to our citizenry for snow removal at this time under this policy. I think our crews can do it with what we have in our budget. We're not going to be hauling snow away, so I don't see a need for an additional fee on our citizenry. So pretty much, I'm going to open it up for council if you guys have any questions or concerns with the policy that's in front of you tonight. Try to be. It, it's a really tough situation. Unfortunately, I did get, I didn't bring it in front of council, but I will say, at least one of our citizenry lashed out at the emergency services for some of the stuff that they did. I think that's totally inappropriate. This is the forum to address any concerns that the citizens might have. The emergency services, across the board, they do a fantastic job. And to lash out at one for putting their concerns in front of this council is really not called for. I mean, they have the job to respond to save lives. And I think that individual happened to forget that, so it's unfortunate.
I think you've done a fantastic job working this wrong. After that last meeting, I said to everybody, I think it makes more sense, although it doesn't make it, I think that to keep it safer for all our PD, ambulance crew, our department.
And for the citizens. It will make it safer for the citizens. I've already got, and I'm kind of waiting to see how the outcome comes tonight, but I went ahead with my crews and I've developed a primary and a secondary crew for each snowfall. So we will attack the snow as quickly as we possibly can. As soon as it looks like it's going to be hitting three inches, the entire primary crew's going to be out. If somebody happens to be off sick or on vacation or something, we have the next person in line and in some cases, we have two people behind them. So we will have a rapid or at least a far better response than what we've had in the past. Like I said, I took the comments to heart and, and listened to what the citizens had to say. And it is, it is extremely difficult to try to shovel snow that had set and thawed during the day and then froze that night and try to do it. So the idea, if, if the good Lord above is willing and puts the snow in the middle of the night, that when folks wake up in the morning, it's all done, streets are... So the idea, if the good Lord above is willing and puts the snow in the middle of the night, that when folks wake up in the morning, it's all done. Streets are, streets are open. They have to move snow one time and that's it. And we're also trying to figure out how we can try to help some of those citizens that have limitations as far as being able to move snow. We have those, we have the list. I'm going to try to make something a little more formal that people can apply and get to them and try to help them out. So we're going to do what we can to try to minimize the impact on our citizens. So I think it's a good policy. I think it's a, it's a safe policy for everyone included. It does put a little bit of shoveling on our folks, but.
Well, I meant that we approved Resolution 202019, amending the snow removal policy. And I'll second that. It's been moved in seconded to approve the Resolution 202019, amending the snow removal policy. Is there any more discussion?
Thanks, Rob, for everything you did because you went to a lot of work to put this together over the last two years.
Very lovely.
Thank you.
More discussion needed?
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, council. Real quick before I get off the podium, just a quick project update on Dunham. The water line is completely done. They're staking today. Tomorrow they'll start bringing in material for final blading and asphalt going down next week.
Nice.
So, so we'll have our first project, so. Good, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Ordinances, Emergency Ordinance 897, adding guidelines and qualifications for variance applications, Section 2-11-910, Section 2-11-120.
Good evening, council. Back in June, end of May, beginning of June, you guys passed a moratorium on variances. We were having some issues with the Board of Adjustment approving variances with no guidelines. So before you tonight is the ordinance 897. 897, adding Article, Chapter 2, Article 11, Section 21110 and 211120. Those sections would include the guidelines and also the application process. So what the applicant would need to have to qualify for that variance. A variance is supposed to be for hardship, not a hardship that was caused by yourself. It's a lot size hardship, medical hardship, that type of a hardship. Not a hardship that's caused by yourself and that's some of the issues that we are running into. So again, before you tonight is that variance to add those guidelines and that application process. Do you have any questions on that?
Well, I'll say what you have before you is best practices for variances. You know, the Board of Adjustment says work throughout time here with very little guidance. And both Nita and I have come from different planning environments in the past where there was much more specific guidance. And so, you know, this is not a criticism of the Board of Adjustments because they didn't actually have a very realistic thing to work with. It's pretty vague. It's not uncommon, a lot of codes have that. But when you look at variances, you know, there's really two things. If you have to give a whole bunch of variances to one area, then there's probably a problem with the code. But if you're giving variances that seem like what's happening doesn't fit into the fabric of that neighborhood or the city, that doesn't make any sense either. And we've seen a few of those and I think I've seen some historically here as well. And so this gives very good, strong guidance and it basically follows, you know, AIA guidelines, American Institute of Architects, and AICPs are real planners that have that fancy credential. But Nita and I both have a fair level of experience with this and we really felt it was necessary. That's why we asked you to do a moratorium. And what spurred us to get this done quicker than the moratorium timeline was we have a variance coming up that probably makes sense, right? And involves construction and we don't want to slow that down, but you know, they can't conform with the code because they have a non-conforming structure they want to expand. It actually makes sense, but if you keep the moratorium, then they get held off and they actually hope to go to construction this winter, so. And we were able to find this is actually based on some other communities' guidelines and we think they're, they'll be very useful for our community.
Well, I would move to add guidelines to Emergency Ordinance 897 for variance applications, Sections 21110 and Section 211120.
Second. It's been moved in seconded for Emergency Ordinance 897, adding guidelines and qualifications for variance applications, Section 2-11-110, Section 2-11-120. Is there any more discussion on that? Nita?
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries. And just so you know, with that being an emergency ordinance, it will pass tonight on final reading.
Yes, it is with great pleasure that I present ordinance number 895 in the City Council tonight, based on the results of the election. Referendum 2A passed, and that is a one cent sales tax for specific purposes in our community to benefit police and police operations, Public Works, and Sky High Park. It's a pretty landmark thing. You know, there were a number of tax elections in the state that passed and a number that didn't. Alamosa's half penny tax for streets did pass as well. So, you know, there are some questions during the election cycle of, well, what about the tax differential? Well, theirs will be eight point four percent and ours is eight point five. This tax will take effect if you pass this ordinance this evening, January 1st of 2020. As we described previously, there will be, and was included in the ballot, a Citizens Oversight Committee, which we have a timeline for getting that all selected. And no funds from this tax will be spent in fiscal year 2020. So they'll give adequate time for the committees, the Oversight Committee to meet, to discuss with the various departments, the projects that they have that fall in line with the funding that is anticipated to be available. And it'll be included in the city's budget process that'll start in August of 2020. So we're not spending any money ahead of the revenues being received. Those, and we're actually creating a fund and it's the One Cent Project Fund and there'll be three areas within it, the ones that are funded here and by this ordinance become law. So it's a really exciting time. Congratulations to City Council for all the work you all did on it, to staff for all the work that they did on it as well. You know, it really was a great team effort and, you know, and it's a great community effort. And, you know, you can talk about margins, but our, our Tabor Council, which I'll throw in, was from Kootak Rock and provided their services pro bono, which was great because, you know, they saved us quite a bit of money and that was really efficient. And that's based upon our past relationship with them. But the attorney that did the bulk of the work for us sent us a congratulations and his comment was, you had fifty-six percent of the vote and these days, that's a pretty good margin. So he was very congratulatory and both his opinion and the legal opinion is if you pass this ordinance tonight, then the voter's will is done and this will take effect. So I think that there's a couple of things that aren't addressed in this ordinance that came up as questions during the election and there's just two I want to address specifically. In the sixth recital, assuming no overall reduction in the amount of sales tax from the two percent sales tax currently collected, the City Council shall make every reasonable effort to maintain current funding for the activities supported by the additional one cent sales tax as approved by the voters. Because the question was, well, if you get this extra money for streets, then the city will take other money from the general fund and just replace that and use the money for other purposes. That was never the intent that we expressed to the voters. And so this ordinance basically says that is the case. Assuming that there's no huge downturn in revenues for the city. And obviously, if there's not revenues to support it. But we're seeing based upon the financial transit information garnered by both myself and our finance director that in fact, our sales taxes are increasing. And we do have more business in the community. I'll hit on that a little bit during my report tonight. And then the other part of this, part that's in this ordinance, this actually breaks into the allocations that we described to the public. So the sales tax revenues must be allocated. So this is ordinance. With twenty-five percent to the police department for authorized expenses, forty percent to Sky High Park for authorized expenses, and thirty-five percent to Public Works for authorized expenses. And we've all discussed what those expenses are, but I think a very key piece of that is that you know that the Friends of Sky High Park are working on a replacement for the multipurpose facility and the addition of a conference center. And one of the key issues in their fundraising, because they're fundraising locally, but they're also fundraising with foundations, was would the city step up to provide adequate maintenance for this facility? And not just that the city says they'll do this, but the voters voted to support that and in fact, they did. So this will be, it's a huge key piece in moving forward with the Friends of Sky High Park's efforts. They will be here at the next council meeting to ask the city to endorse and participate in an additional planning grant, which follows the state's process. The first planning grant's going very well. Then there's the additional final design work and they'll be in front of the council at the next meeting to discuss that. And you'll have a resolution which of course staff will endorse as well. Process is moving along nicely. And after years and years and years of this community's efforts to get there, I think we are on the cusp of it and to me, that's really exciting. I haven't been here but six years. But I know this effort's been going on for a long time. And the first phase of that project was getting the grandstands redone and that project's basically done. So now we have this next piece. And the third phase is whatever is going to come after. But this multipurpose facility will provide great recreational benefits for our youth and our adults, our citizens, as well as a conference facility where we can, it'll be unique to the valley and we can attract a lot more people here, which creates more commerce. So this is a super exciting time for the city and with that, I would recommend that the council approve ordinance number 895 this evening.
I would.
Have a speech before they go.
No, I don't have a speech. I move that we pass ordinance 895 to enact a one percent sales tax increase in the City of Montevista on final reading. And I am very proud to do that.
It's been moved in seconded to approve ordinance 895 to enact a one percent sales tax increase in the City of Montevista on final reading. Is there any more discussion? And Nita?
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Counselor Segola?
Aye.
Counselor Ellathorpe?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you and congratulations to our community.
Good evening, council. Congratulations again. So I'm here to give you the August financial report for the city. Sixty-seven percent of the year's lapse since August and we're still coming in strong with our revenues at seventy-nine percent. So we're doing good there. Revenues for the year in the general fund as of August were two million, five hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Most of that, again, coming from taxes, which is a little over, or close to one point five million. So expenditures in the general fund are at sixty percent or one point nine three million, almost two million. So our general fund balance is, our revenues exceed expenditures by five hundred and nineteen thousand dollars for the year as of August. So that brings the fund balance to almost one point four million in the general fund, so. The cash balances for the general fund in altogether are nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars and four hundred and sixty-one thousand of that is in our main checking account, so. In the water fund, our revenues are at six hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, which is seventy-two percent of the revenue budget. Expenditures at month end were at fifty-three percent or eight hundred and seventy-nine thousand. The unrestricted cash for the water fund is at eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars and of that, four hundred and twenty-six thousand is in the main checking account. In the water fund, expenditures exceeded revenues by two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars and we've started to see Rob's guys completing their projects and we're going to see that towards the end of the year, kind of continue with what we've trended for, for the year. Revenues in the sewer fund are at eighty-eight percent of the approved budget or eight hundred and nine, eight hundred and six thousand. Largest portion of that continues obviously to be for services, which is six hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. Expenditures at the end of the month in the sewer fund were at thirty-eight percent or six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. The unrestricted cash in the sewer fund is at three hundred and ninety-seven thousand and the portion of cash in the main checking account for the sewer fund is a little over three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. In the sewer fund, revenues exceed expenditures by a hundred and fifty-four thousand, so their fund balance is at four point three million. So we're doing really good in that fund as well. Couple of things that I wanted to just kind of touch base with and highlight besides the financials. My utility billing clerk, Diana, and I had the opportunity to attend Casell Training out in Las Vegas this last month. Casell is our accounting software, our utility billing software, our court software. So it was really great to go out there and kind of have an in-depth detail of how we could better utilize it. We learned a lot of new things. I've been here a little over a year and a half and it was great to say, see some tricks and things that we haven't been utilizing. And in the future, something that I'm excited about for the budget next year, we're going to use Casell, what they have integrated there versus the Excel spreadsheet. So next year, you won't have the great big books to deal with. So kind of exciting stuff there. And then I also had the opportunity to attend a seminar with Forest in Golden for Colorado Trust, which is our cash investment account. And something exciting with that, they also service our debt. We pay our bond debt out of there, but we also have that cash investment account. We looked as of October, the cities received in interest through that investment thirteen thousand dollars. So as of October, so we're pretty excited about that. So that's kind of all I have unless you guys have any questions.
I just want to say it's so nice to hear about a healthy budget.
Yeah.
After so many years, and that credit goes to everybody in the city and the work that you guys do and the, you know, my gosh, it's been a long time coming and it's just so nice to hear about a healthier budget. And I know it's not, you know, through the roof and stellar and, but for us, it's a very healthy budget and I can't give up.
It's, it's exciting. I'm, I second what you say. The department heads, Forest has done an amazing job of keeping everybody under budget and, and doing more with less. And that's, that's what we've been able to, why we've been able to bring the fund balances up and not just the fund balances, but the cash balances as well, so.
Not every small town can say that.
Right.
So kudos to you guys.
Thanks, Jenny.
Kind of hard to follow all that good news. And mostly I have good news. You know, in my report that I had to pack it, you know, growth continues in the city. And, you know, we continue to have some new businesses. We continue to have new construction. You know, last month, the valuation of, basically they're all home improvement projects, not new homes, but it was eighty-three thousand dollars. That's a lot of home improvements and that is treading up over time, which generally shows, you know, confidence in what's going on. which generally shows, you know, confidence in what's going on. Um, we also have a few other things that are percolating. That might be some larger developments, so, uh, I'll let you know how that's going. Uh, we're still working on that. But one thing I wanted to talk about a little bit, you all might vaguely remember that you approved a WEP plan. You're like, what was that? A Water Efficiency Plan for the City of Montevista? And, you know, we're required to have one by state law once every seven years. And, uh, before that started, Rob's like, hey, Forrest, we have to work on a WEP plan. It's like, ugh, okay, that sounds like not much fun. Um, and parts of it are not much fun. Um, both Rob's folks and the finance department had to create a whole ton of data, um, for that plan that, you know, shows all of our water usage and all this, um, other stuff that's going on at the same time while we're working on the water augmentation, our water augmentation plan. And something kind of cool happened. I thought it was kind of cool. Um, we filed our plan, there we go, and, and we know what's in it and some things that we're working on, um, to meet that plan, and, and we're working towards that. But I got this phone call from, um, this really nice lady who's like, hey, we read your WEP plan. Wow, you really did that? And, uh, the thing that surprised her, um, she is part of, used to be called the, uh, Colorado Water Law Institute. It's part of, uh, University of Colorado. They've changed the name now, and I keep losing that. But, um, she said, well, we read your plan, and, and you guys really integrate your land use management planning with your water planning. And I thought that was a no brainer. But apparently, a lot of communities don't do that. So, um, I participated in a survey and interview with her, and I was like, yeah, that's great, okay. Um, what they were doing is for the Colorado Conservation Water, Colorado Water Conservation Board, lots of acronyms, um, basically creates regulations for how you write those plans. And so they got this fabulous, really thick book of stuff you had to do. And our consultants were great in knowing what we had to do to make the plan work. And, you know, Rob's and my discussion was, we wanted a plan that we could do. Right? You could make a plan that follows their guidelines, but can you do the stuff that's in it? And our previous plan, you know, we didn't achieve a lot of the goals, but some of them, we were like, wow, how are we supposed to do that? So we created a plan that was doable. And the outset, they, uh, they interviewed 30 different, um, planned makers. And then they created these guidelines that were adopted by CWCB, which is a supplement and its best practices. And the city of Montevista is in there as a case study. And I was like, wow, that's kind of cool. And it was really about how we integrated our thought process, and we do it on a regular basis. Then I got invited to come and go and speak at a, uh, at a conference they had in Pueblo. And that's where I was Tuesday. Um, and it's pretty dynamic. It was really interesting, and everybody has water challenges in Colorado. But I thought it was a really good feather in the cap, not only of our city and of Rob and Jenny and the finance department, um, that we were able to think like we're supposed to. Because when I got the document, I started looking at the best practice. I'm like, yeah, we did that, we did that, we did that. Oh, we could do that a little differently, but we did it. And so we really did a, a really nice job on that, uh, project, and we got some recognition for it. Um, when I was at the conference, somebody's like, hey, yeah, you guys are in here. I'm like, yeah, okay. But it was kind of neat. And there was a whole bunch of water planners, uh, or water providers with a few planners. And I thought that was, uh, it was pretty fascinating to, to think that we, um, for small communities, are a leader in Colorado on that. Um, I think we just heard an opportunity tonight where we can become a leader on this vaping issue, and I think that's pretty exciting as well. So, um, you know, kudos to the city council of being forward-thinking and forward-looking. Um, I think that you all are having a really positive impact on this community. Uh, and I look forward for us to continue doing that. And, you know, things are, are looking up. So, uh, that is very exciting. Uh, one thing I put in my report, and you're like, why is this interesting? I suppose, um, a new modular factory will be opening in Pueblo. And one of the barriers that we're seeing in our community right now, um, we, we do have people that are building new houses, and there's two or three in the pipeline. And generally, they're manufactured on a permanent foundation or modulators. But what I find is these customers, they're like five houses back in the, in the list, and there's not a lot of providers. And the state has worked very hard to try to get somebody to build modular manufactured housing, housing units in the state. And the fact that they're going to open this big new factory in Pueblo may really help with our housing issue here, because it'll be modular and manufactured homes, and we have lots that are, people buy it, and they want to work on those. And I was just talking to a customer today that's doing that. So it's actually kind of exciting for infill lots in our community. Um, I think that it'll help with our housing issues and also some of the work that the URA is doing as well. So I just thought that was, you know, I read that, and I was like, wow, that's really exciting. Um, because the proximity, right? You don't pay as much to get it here. They're going to have a larger volume. I think all that's going to, um, play in our favor as we go forward. So, um, that's really all I have, unless you all have any questions. Oh, and one footnote, uh, Kids Connection will not be making a report tonight. They've had quite a week. And so I asked, well, I talked to Nik, and I was like, you could come at the next meeting, so...
Perfect.
All right, thank you.
So I have a couple of things for you, um, this evening. I don't have a written report this evening. I will have a written report at the next council meeting. I just wanted to, I've been pretty busy the last few months with elections and working on different ordinances and going to training. But Dale has a couple of letters. We did receive a thank you letter, letter from the, um, Colorado... And there's also a thank you letter from the young ladies who presented at the last council meeting for the tree, um, Tree for Life or Dream Tree. They, uh, were very proud when they dropped that off. They were really excited to see council's reaction to that, uh, thank you. They also gave one to the tree board as well. Um, so the next council meeting, um, I will have a written report for you. Um, thank you and congratulations on the 1% tax. And, uh, we have a new council member. Um, he wasn't here tonight, but, um, we will be swearing him in in January. That's Larry Foster. He ran unopposed, and so he will be joining our team in January.
Do you guys like us to read these? This is from, uh, Jada and Sidney Woodke. Thank you, Trees for Tomorrow. Really, those two young ladies are, they're on their way to being great salespeople. So on the back of this card, it says, uh, "Come and dream with us. 2018, 2019, 200 trees, 25 students, grades, grades K through 12, 98% survival rate in the nursery. Their goal for 2019 and 2020 is 400 to 600 trees, and they'll be in need of soil, containers, mulch, fertilizer, and materials for watering system. Trees picked with help from Colorado State Forest Service Sapling Program, start nursery and plant it throughout Montevista, hoping to get more of community involved. The contributors for, uh, 2018 to 2019 was Montevista School District, Rocky Mountain Soils, SLD Garden Center, and Colorado State Forest. Thank you for supporting. Thank you for your support in dreaming with us. Sidney and Jada." I remember when Montevista used to be Tree City USA for several years. We still are.
We still are.
My golly. We're going to be there permanently now. Would you like to read that one?
This one is from the Colorado Fallen Hero Foundation. I'm sure I got my glasses. Uh, "To the city of Montevista, dear sirs, thank you for your generous donation to the Colorado Fallen Hero Foundation. As you know, your generosity will directly benefit Colorado law enforcement agencies in the event of a line of duty death. Since our inception in 2017, the foundation has supported and assisted the Douglas Adams and Los Anamis County Sheriff's Offices and the Colorado State Patrol with planning and carrying out memorial services for their deputies and troopers, all of whom gave their lives serving their communities. We were honored to assist these agencies and humbled to see firsthand how communities rally around their law enforcement agencies to provide support in many different forms when tragedy strikes. Your generous donation is an example of this support. The Colorado Fallen Hero Foundation is a 501(c)(3) charitable organization, and your donation of $180 is tax deductible as allowed by law. No goods or services were given in exchange for your donation. For your tax purposes, they do the IEN. Um, this letter will serve as your receipt. But it's generally a thank you from the Fallen Heroes Foundation."
Very nice.
All right, well, I guess we're down to council reports. So who wants to start? Kathy?
I, I just want to, uh, thank the citizens for approving the 1% tax fund. It's definitely a step forward for our city. I can't, I'm, I'm looking, like, when I ran for council, I, uh, I made a mention, like, and I'm looking 30 years into this, into the future. You know, not just three or four, five. You know, I want my grandkids or my kids, whoever they, whatever happens in the future, to have some place to go play, to have some place to be involved. And, uh, and, and just like it was mentioned earlier, I think that it's a really important decision that was made, on behalf of the citizens, you know, to, to approve the 1% tax fund. I just can't say enough for it. You know, I think it's a major step forward, so...
Gary?
Yeah, I was, um, a little inch to attend, uh, Strong Cities, Strong Towns, seminar, conference up in, um, Lakewood, Colorado. It was, uh, very enlightening, and that's all I'm going to say. It was, uh, it was, it was well done. It did open up, uh, some, I was looking for a lot more, but it did open up some, some ideas that, uh, that, that we can activate in our own communities. I always heard, heard a talk to, to manager at some length about that. But, uh, it was, uh, it, bottom line, I was, it, it really was well worth the effort. I wanted to congratulate the, the folks, I guess they're all gone, but they're all just like you guys from high school to come out and make a presentation of, uh, something that, that maybe their, their peers, I don't know. I think they were pretty much, the, the, the information they got was that their peers were pretty much with them, and that's, that's good. But there's certainly several that won't be. And that's, uh, I appreciate that kind of stand, and they deserve the, uh, kudos for that. The other thing is that, uh, I got to participate a little bit in a, uh, Olo Parade, it was about a mile long, when the, uh, marching band from, uh, Montevista High School came back from Ran Junction with a first-place finish in the state competition. And that was, that was stunning. I've been involved with those guys, mostly transporting, uh, for the last few years, and this is a real pinnacle. They pulled that off right after I resigned from, uh, from transporting. But, uh, I don't know, you guys in the band or not? No? Okay, well, you, you still get the kudos for it. And the other thing is that, in connection with that, I've been after folks in the community with the, whether it's the Board of Education or Chamber, uh, to not just renew, but maybe put up a whole new billboard recognizing the schools in this community for their work and for recognizing achievements in academics, athletics, band, arts, that is a billboard size at the gateway to the community, coming in 160 and coming in 285. We haven't figured out the details for that yet, and it's not anywhere's in the budget. So I just pulled a post on Facebook and got at least 70 right here in the community that are willing to support that. So I wanted to spread that out, let the people know on YouTube, and hear that, uh, that's something that we need. We've got a little one up by Sonic that was updated last in '09. But we're going to have something very nice that's really a welcome sign to the community and a broadcast of everything that's being done right, starting with youth. And, uh, so keep that in mind. We'll have a little more organization on that, but, uh, it's only to get that one sale pitch.
And then that's pretty good, that you got like 70 likes, you have like 70 prints.
The others were new. But the, the like was, it was a conditional thing, as in, you know, like, or kind of, if, if you're willing to support this project. And I was, you know, I was a little pressure out there, but keep that in mind, and I'm looking forward to seeing that out in our community, including, uh, cross-country, uh, you name it, whatever. Uh, it, it needs to be out there. We've got some ideas on how to make that work, but it's, uh, it's a huge billboard, which is going to take some zoning, and, you know, we're going to talk to the city about this. But, you know, but you know how that is. But, uh, yeah.
My turn. Again, I just want to commend the youth. You, I've had a chance to be in every single school in the district in the last few weeks, and you guys really give me hope for the future. You recognize mistakes, you step up, you're not afraid to say what you mean. And I really appreciate that. Also, I feel like the, the 1-cent tax initiative wasn't really for all of us. It, it's about you guys, and because you're the future, and you're going to be here and, and reap the benefits of that. So, um, you know, go home and thank your parents for that. Also, I got to give a little push for the Connor Animal Shelter. We are overloaded, they are overloaded. I haven't been out there much, but they're overloaded. If you have one dog, don't you think you could bring home another one? At my house, I have three dog nights. Winter's coming on, it's really nice. I have a three-dog night at my house every night. I think everybody needs to adopt another buddy. They're overloaded right now, and they're not, not cute little sweet things. A lot of them are bigger dogs, and, um, they're really hard to adopt out. And, uh, really, aren't you ready for a three-dog night? I think everybody needs to join in the party. Your turn.
All right. No, congratulations. And I, there were lots of people that worked on the election, but I kind of wanted to recognize Friends of, uh, Friends of Sky High, because I know they did a lot of work to help with that, and we appreciate that. And I'm really happy for them and for Rob and his crew, and Chief and your crew. You guys really deserve that, so...
They were as excited as we were. We were texting Carlos and Kathy all, all evening going, oh, yeah, yeah, look, it looks good. And, uh, they were as thrilled as I was and all of you are, because without that tax initiative, most likely, Sky High would not happen. Uh, very soon anyway. I, I won't say never, but, so they were thrilled.
No, that's, they did a lot of work too, so... And, uh, just want to remind everyone that Saturday night, the ninth, the ninth, is the fire department's annual chili dinner. And so I hope everyone can go out and take some. And that's the Saturday. Well, or it's the next one, but I...
No, it's the ninth.
It's the ninth, on my calendar, I looked, yeah. And they always do a great dinner, and it's a great gathering point for the community. Oh? All the veterans.
Yes.
At the Central, yeah.
That's a big deal.
It's coming, it'll be posted for the party, for the chili dinner. It'll be posted for the party, for the children.
Yeah.
So be sure, go out and get everybody to go for that. I'll back out.
And congratulations to the band. You guys, they did awesome.
Really, uh, support of this community stands strong right now. Seeing this tax initiative go through tells us that the community sees the change, and they're in support of what's going on, and it was a total team effort. Not anybody can take credit for it. Uh, staff, the city staff, Forrest, Jenny, Mita, everybody that was involved for this, thank you so much. Uh, and all of us that were in support of it, you guys, thank you for being backing it, but more than anything, thank the community. You guys, uh, I feel good things about this. We're taking little steps at a time, but my golly, I, I feel good about the community. On Halloween night, I was putting scare on, having a great time, and I had a young man tell me, he said, uh, there's a different atmosphere in the community than what there has been, and he was very pleased to see how things are moving along on Halloween night, so... Thank you, thank you to the community, thank you kids for being here, and thank you for, I know you have to be here for your class, but you know what? You can step out of your realm and do something, because it is your community eventually. It will be all yours, so... Thank you. And with that being said, we will adjourn the meeting until November twenty-first.
Recession.
I'm sorry, well, recess till November twenty-first. Recession. Thank you.